Good evening. Before we call this meeting to order, we had scheduled Judge Jill Gainas, candidate for Jefferson County District Judge, Place 11. She unfortunately is suffering with kidney stones as we speak, which I don't wish on anyone, but she has sent in her place Ms. Beth Harris. And Ms. Harris, if you want to come forward and talk, we'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I appreciate you letting us come before to talk about Judge Jill Gainas. She is the current district judge, Place 11, which serves in Bessemer. Now, why is a Bessemer judge standing in Homewood asking for votes? She's required to run countywide. It is a countywide judgeship. She has 18 years' experience as a prosecutor, eight years on the bench. She attended the University of Alabama and University of Alabama Law School. She grew up in Pleasant Grove. She has a son who's 16 and attends Hoover High School. She takes her role as a member of the community very seriously. She serves on a number of local boards from the Hoover and legacy YMCA's, Hoover City School Systems, childcare advocacy, and the Domestic Violence Center. This went much faster than I had anticipated, so I guess that's actually to your benefit that I was here instead of Judge Gainas, because she might have taken a little more of your time. I appreciate you letting me speak this evening and would appreciate your support on November 6th for Judge Jill Gainas.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Harris. Congratulations on doing a good job of stepping in there quickly. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation by Dan Weinrib, who is, A, a Homewood resident, B, the Terrence City Clerk, and C, the president of Temple Bethel. And while you're working your way forward, Dan, I will also tell you that after his invocation, we will have PAC 279 with All Saints Episcopal lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Cub Master Whit Byrd is here, as well as several other parents, and we appreciate y'all being here, and each and every one of you. So if you will, stand with me, please.
Good evening. The prayer I'm going to utter in Hebrew, I'll give you the English translation, is the call to prayer that millennia ago, that the priests would ask the Israelites to pray to acknowledge God, and it goes like this in English. "Hear, O Israel, the Lord is our God, the Lord is one. Praise be your name forever and ever." Amen. So here's the Hebrew. Shema Yisrael, adonai elheinu, adonai achad. Boros shenkei ve'adah, huzolei olam vayad. Amen.
It's very good to have you here, and I understand y'all spent some quality time with our mayor and chief of staff, so that was good. Thank you very much for doing that. Roll call, please. Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here. So we have a quorum, and we will continue forward. I will start with a reading of the minutes from September 24th, 2018. The Chair would welcome and appreciate a motion for dispensing with the reading and approving said minutes.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Thames. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Also, we have the minutes from October 10th, 2018, that y'all have received. Chair would welcome a similar motion for dispensing of the reading and approval of said minutes. Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Smith. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous as well. Board vacancies or appointments, are there any tonight? I'm not aware of any, but, okay, good. All right, we'll move on from that on. We have a number of changes to the agenda. Let me see if I can make these changes. All right. New business, 2710-18, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a loan agreement with Bryant Bank, requested by Robert Burgett, our finance director, and the Finance Committee. Does that need to go to committee referral, Mr. Jones, or we've got it listed as being other new business to sign tonight?
I wouldn't think so. I think this is just a procedural.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I placed the order because of the not knowing about Veterans Day and to go to, if it needed to go to committee referral, because with the delay with the next meeting, but the loan is not ready. Norris, Mr. Kendrick reviewed the contract at this time. I was just trying to get it to go to committee referral.
Well, then we'll.
We have several department heads that are wanting to buy their vehicles.
Okay, that needs to go to finance, then.
Okay, we'll put it on committee referral for finance. Hold on. All right, new business, other, 2510-18, request for consideration to release a weed lean, don't say that quickly, at 1605 Berry Road. Again, requested by Robert Burgett, our acting city clerk. 2610-18, request for consideration to change the November and December city council meeting dates due to Veterans Day holiday and other holidays as well, requested by Mr. Burgett. Request to move 1410-18 from committee referral to other new business. Request to move 1310-18 from committee referral to other new business. 2710-18, request for consideration to endorse downtown master plan, requested by Mr. Thames. Committee referral, 2810-18, request to share expenses for improvements in the infrastructure in the city right-of-way, requested by James Decker. And that will be assigned to, let's think about that. That should be assigned to finance, Mr. Jones. And committee referral, 2910-18, request to address parking on 29th Avenue. This will be assigned to public safety, requested by the mayor. Are there any other items that need to be added to this agenda? If not.
Mr. President, I had, what was the Bryant Bank? I had written down 2710-18 two times. What was the Bryant Bank item?
Hold on, thank you for asking that. Hold on. Well.
Bryant Bank was 2710-18.
Okay, so this, excuse me, let me back up. So 2710-18 should be 2910-18, okay?
The Bryant Bank is 29?
No, no, no. The request for consideration to endorse the downtown master plan, requested by Mr. Thames, will be 2910-18. And we'll leave the other two as they are.
But 2910-18 is the parking on 29th?
You're right, that should be 30.
Okay.
So it'll be 3010-18. You are exactly right. Thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry. There were a lot of those, and I lost track somewhere. So I believe there were two committee referral agenda items that were moved to new business tonight.
Yes.
Can you repeat what those are? I'm sorry.
1410-18 and 1310-18.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Mr. Jones, thank you for your help.
No problem.
Chair would welcome a motion and second for the amended agenda.
Leaved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. All right, we've got several items here. Consent agenda, Chair would welcome a motion and second for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Gualtney. Any other questions about that? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, we're, the first item, we're going to take some things out of item here. Bear with us, Mr. Burgett. 2610-18 is a request for consideration to change both November and December's meeting dates due to multiple holidays. What we're looking at is changing the meeting dates to the 1st and 3rd in November, which would be 11/5 and 11/19. And in December, it would be the 1st and 3rd as well, which would be 12/3 and 12/17. I'm aware that the band's going to be traveling, and at least two of y'all will be going for the 19th meeting. Is there anyone else who would be missing 11?
I'll be in New York for the next.
Okay, so there's three that would be missing that. But as far as we know, everyone else will be here on 11/19. Okay, good. What about the two dates for December? Is there a problem with anyone?
3rd and 17th.
3rd and 17th. This will give us a chance to align November and December's meeting with the holiday seasons. That being the case, Chair would welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. Next item is 1808-18, request for consideration to contract for the citywide traffic study, requested by Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Thames. I understand we're still carrying that over. Or are we?
I think we, you know, at this point, with just a little paperwork to work out, if we would like to move to engage Volker, we can.
So your recommendation would be that we can.
Yes.
We go ahead and do that. Is that a motion from you, Mr. Thames?
It is.
Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Gualtney. Do we have any further discussion about that item?
Can I ask what?
Sure, Mr. Wright.
Paperwork is, what that means?
Adjust the resolution, and then we're waiting to hear back from ALDOT. As we've been for a while. Right, JJ?
Yes.
So we're just adjusting some language to make sure ALDOT's okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So your motion is subject to ALDOT's approval, Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is Greg here? Greg, you'd sent me an ALDOT agreement for that project that we actually have never signed, that we need to approve that, that Jarvis Leonard has signed it, based on what you've sent me.
Yes, sir, that's probably fairly well dated. I don't remember the date on it.
August 17th?
Yes, sir.
And we've been waiting for the.
Yes, for him, though.
Before we go forward, we're, at some point, we'll have to adopt a resolution if the state is soon as authorizing this work. You can do it now or whenever you'd like, I'm just.
Well, let's wait until the state gives its approval. At this point, what we're doing is approving Volker, right?
I hope this was the first responsible state.
I understand. All right, move on to 1509-18, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 201 Vulcan Road, requested by Robert Norris, Greg Cobb of BEZ Department. We'll set that for November 5th.
He, what? At the committee, he asked to be carried over. Did he come back?
He has never come back to me with an alternate plan.
Well, then, if that's the case.
I thought he was coming back.
He said he was, and we've not heard, since that night, we've not heard from him.
He's going to get back to us, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason to set up a hearing, since we haven't heard anything back.
Okay, well, then, let me ask you this. An alternative would be to drop it if we have.
I would send it to committee. We could send it back to committee.
All right, let's send it back.
Yeah, let's go.
There we go.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is off-topic, but a conversation that sprung out of that was the roof we saw. Was that you on the roof of the hotel I saw the other day, Greg?
I wasn't on the roof, no, sir, but there was a view of the roof where the roof is peeled back.
Uh-huh.
And I've not, I asked Mr. Norris to send me a copy of that. That was done from a drone shot. It's not up to date on Google Earth.
Okay.
But.
I just saw some people on the roof not long after that, and I didn't know if it was some folks from the city. Oh, really?
Oh, really?
Were they putting, covering it back up?
Were they dragging the roof back?
Interesting. All right, that's a little off-topic, but we are sending, that's okay, we're sending this.
I'm curious about that.
I understand, we're sending this back to committee. Did we send this to?
Planning and Development.
Plan, PND.
No, special issues.
Special issues.
Yeah, it says sign.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. 1609-18, request to work in the right-of-way on, at 1024 Salter Road to install a drainage channel and our curb to connect with the city's curb, requested by Ken Kane and Wyatt Pew with BEZ. Mr. Cobb, are you going to speak to this matter?
Yes, sir. I met with Mr. Kane and the neighbor, Brian Platt, who's building the house next door on-site, a week ago. Came to an agreement on how to handle that water, and basically, they're going to saw cut the pavement where it is. Mr. Platt's going to build a new driveway on his side of the property line with the curb up, and then Mr. Kane's going to allow the water coming off the swell from his property to continue on to the street. And I can handle that without any further counsel action. It's a standard driveway that we built.
Okay.
So do we need to drop this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll drop it, maybe we should drop it.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wright. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Cobb. All right, 0110-18, request for fiscal year-end budget amendments, requested by Mr. Burgett. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on October 15th, and for this particular item, I apologize, we're going to have to, I'm going to have to make a motion from the floor. We did, the Finance Committee did meet and vote 3 to 0 to recommend approval for this item, but there were two, two items that we need, we had to update, and they're very minimal, but I'll just mention what they are. One of them was for drills and training to the fire account, and there was a $19 difference in what was presented to us.
Okay.
Very minimal. And then, from account number 540400, equipment and repair to the street account, it was a difference of $182.46. Now, what was sent out on Friday for this particular resolution was correct, but I just wanted to make you aware of those two changes were not what Finance had recommended. So I'll make the motion to approve this resolution from the floor.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by who?
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Higginbotham, good, thank you very much. Any questions or concerns about this item? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is Resolution 18152.
3.
53.
52 was the citywide traffic study.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
53, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on. 0210-18, request for consideration to declare item surplus, requested by Gordon James with Fleet Maintenance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval and declare these surplus ordinance.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Mr. Kendrick, would you read it, please?
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment as surplus. See, by this, established and declared that the following described property is no longer needed for public or municipal purpose, therefore declared surplus property. 2006 Chevrolet Trailblazer, 2003 International Truck, 2000, excuse me, five-by-21 bleachers, a total of 10 from the park board, 2002 Tahoe, 1500 two-door, a 1997 Chevrolet 2500 HD two-door, a 2006 Ford F-250 four-by-four, and five sets of on-spot chains removed from fire engine fleet, three used oil reels, one Robair Cool-Tec air conditioning recovery recycling machine, a 1994 Chevrolet Blazer, and one bandsaw. That the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to dispose of property to buy auctions at the highest bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so the Chair would welcome a motion for adoption, and a second.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Higginbotham, second from?
Second.
Somebody.
Second.
Second for Mr. Jones.
Walter.
Thank you all. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this is ordinance 2716, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, 1010-18, request for consideration of zoning ordinance changes, requested by Mr. Thames, and we will set that public hearing for November 26, 28, excuse me, November 19th at 6:00 PM. Oh, these holidays. All right. 1309-18, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way to install a parking pad approximately 18 by 20 feet at the end of a 12-foot wide concrete driveway, and to also attach an approximately 10 by 10-foot parking pad to said 12-foot driveway and right-of-way at 1622 Ridge Road. Is anyone else here to speak to this item? Mr. Cobb or?
Mr. Henderson is not here tonight. I've got some photographs that I had last time that show you actually what's really in question. This is a view at the bottom, the left one is at the bottom, and that red line represents to the right of the red line what is actually on the city property. It's a unimproved street right-of-way. The other view is from the top of the hill down, and this is, it's in two places. That one right there is one corner is off on us by about that much, and the next one down below is on us by that much, three or four feet. If you look down from the hill, from up, you can see it's a terribly steep driveway. All that white-looking concrete down there is new, the other is the old part of the driveway. At the time we discovered this, it was just dirt. None of that concrete was there, and there was a big storm on the way, and I met with Mr. Henderson, and I said, "You can roll the dice, but you better cover up this place for all the muds at the bottom of the hill. Either pave it, cover it in straw, cover it in plastic or something," because it was just a big sea of red mud. And he elected to go ahead and take that chance on those two corners being on us to, he got the concrete on the ground the day before the storm hit, which I definitely wanted that, because it's too, you see, as steep as it is, all that would have been down below on Melrose Place. So those two corners in question, and at the top of the hill, there's a little pull-off flush at the edge of the driveway, doesn't show up in that picture, but it's a little pull-off like we do sometimes in front of a home that's actually in the city right-of-way. That's what referred to as a parking pad. But those two corners, they've got a, the last map is a tax map, if we could see it.
Brian, is that?
It's okay, there it is, okay. If you see, the number 12 is just a part of the parcel ID number, that area where it says 70 feet, those two little corners, right in there are where the two little corners are that are off. If you look at that 40-foot right-of-way, that's for a street that ends down below where the lines in the middle are. The grade on that area is about 20%, give or take, could be a little more, and it's never been developed, and actually, most people didn't know it was there, but it is there. It's a, it's an unused street right-of-way that by our ordinance, we wouldn't put a road there because it's too steep. Our ordinance only will allow us 15%, and my understanding is the fire department would like to see nothing more than 10% because if you actually made that into a street, I don't think many cars could ever climb it if it was wet.
Chief President, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm not questioning Mr. Cobb, I'm just.
I know that.
I'm just getting information, okay.
Well, our subdivision regs say 15% max, and in my talk with the fire department, it's always been try not to get past 10, because it's, if you look at something like, say, 16th Street and Ward 1, very steep hill, and that one's just less than 15%. It's, I think, 12 or 13 where I measured it several years ago. But I know that if you stop on that hill and it's wet, and a pickup truck or anything like that that has, that doesn't have front-wheel drive or real positive traction, you're in a problem. I think Mr. Jones is well aware of that, since I haven't lived near there, that it's, we don't need roads that steep.
So my understanding is that he's already done this work?
Yes, sir.
And he did it with a tacit recommendation from you?
No, my recommendation was you roll the dice, you cover it up somehow, because I don't want all the red mud sitting there when that storm is coming. It's basically a warning, you can roll the dice, or you can take your chances, but if you put mud down on Melrose Place, I'm coming after you, basically what it boiled down to, I mean, yeah.
I understand. You also understand completely how frustrated we get about jobs being done first and then asking permission after.
He didn't know he was off the right-of-way. The way, like I say, nobody knows that right-of-way is there, because it just looks like two properties come together. The way they found it was Scott Cook went over to look at something, it might have been the mud. I don't know, I didn't even ask him. He's probably aware of the cause of erosion control. And we found a stake down on the other side of that pickup truck off in the bushes, we found that corner stake. And that's how I was able to line up and find that, that little corner being off on those two places. Mr. Henderson is well aware that he was rolling the dice on that, but the rest of it, even if he left that off, off, if he left the corners off, it didn't matter. He had to do something with that, all that red mud prior to that storm getting there, because as steep as that hill is, I don't think you'd ever contain it.
I understand.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
Sorry, can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, go.
So what is Mr. Henderson going to do to control the amount of water coming down that hill? Because all I see is a sea of concrete.
The rest of it will be vegetated down below. The way that hillside is sloped, it's just heavy vegetation down below there. He's got, on the downhill side of that, he did go in and hay all the ground, and he had silt fence up down below him, but it's just going to have to be vegetation. It's always been like that, that driveway, you see, the old concrete was always there, or I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been there a long time. What he did was basically make a... They can go into the... He's got a garage into the house, he's got to have room to turn a car around, because you really want to turn around and go up that hill forward, not in reverse. I don't think a pickup truck would go up in reverse, to tell you the truth.
Mr....
Who else? Yes.
I do have a couple of questions. I've struggled with this since it came out of committee on Monday night. My first question is, when we permit this kind of work, do we require a survey before they do the work?
There should have been a survey on the House, yes.
Didn't Mr. Henderson indicate to us at the committee meeting last week that no survey was done before the work was done?
I don't remember what he said about that.
That was my understanding of what he said. I'm just... I'm struggling with this. I feel like a survey should have been done beforehand. I know, it's just a little piece, and it's not anything we'd ever use, but I guess for me, it's just the idea that we have a process, people should follow the process, and if he followed the process and needed those corners and come to us before he did it, I'm not sure that we wouldn't have just all unanimously said, "Yeah, we don't care," but...
He may have, but like I said, the reason he had concrete set up, I said, "You can roll the dice." He knew that, straight up, roll the dice, will you take your chance, but get it approved or not approve it. It's not personal to me, I don't really care what he does with it, but it was important to me to get that dirt covered up when the storm coming, because...
I understand that, and controlling the dirt in the event of a rain event is his responsibility, so I mean, not ours, and so... Well, enforcement is ours, controlling it is his. I think you've answered the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Andrus, what was the report from Special Issues?
The committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Council McCloskey and seconded by Council Gualtney.
All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues. Let me ask a question. Mr. Kendrick, this is for you. Procedurally, if the council chose to approve this subject to what Mr. Higginbotham just recommended, is that an option?
What did he... I'm sorry, what are his recommendations?
I just questioned whether a survey was required for this kind of work, and if so...
Subject to a survey?
I mean, the survey will just confirm what we already know to be true at this point, I think, so I'm not sure what the survey would.
Well, I know it's already done, but that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be other problems with it down the road.
Well, the survey for ones, you know, with the corners are...
That's true.
But a final grade permit, because one of the directions y'all had issued, I don't know, six or eight months ago, was that every permit application had to come with a final grade plan. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure I remember that.
We had this at the House over on...
That was the case before we changed the zoning ordinance, when you measured height. But we changed that.
Oh, St. Charles. St. Charles.
So what are you saying, Mr. Kendrick?
I'm just saying, typically, the height that the bill was measured from a median grade, and if a grading plan was required at that point, but we changed the zoning ordinance. That's correct.
I thought we issued a... Some sort of memorandum under your department that said that all permits have been...
A final grading plan?
Based on that St. Charles issue we had.
Yes, you're absolutely right. I did issue a memorandum to that effect, that we were going to start getting a final grading plan, and on this one, I don't believe we got one, no.
It was an existing house, all they did was a new driveway and a deck on the back and some other... They didn't change the house other than a deckwork on the back and some interior modifications.
So...
The height was not an issue.
Correct.
So there's no benefit to... Excuse me, there's no benefit to getting one after the fact, then, is there? Mr. Gualtney, what do you think?
My concern was, looking at the street view, was that they're just going to dump all that water on Melrose Place now, and they're going to have Melrose Place standing before us next year.
Well, I agree. How can we address it?
I don't... So renovations don't trigger the requirement for a final grade plan?
That's correct. Unless it's somehow sizable enough.
I don't know how we address that.
So we're back to a motion by Special Issues to approve.
Well, and I don't disagree with Mr. Gualtney's point about water control in general. I'm just not sure that that's what we're here about tonight with regard to those two little corners. I don't know if that substantially changes the water. Your issue, to me, is something that we might need to address, but is probably not part of this issue.
It's a symptom of the issue, since there's so much concrete put in place, you know, and...
I don't disagree, but I don't disagree, I'm just saying the... What we're talking about is not the amount of concrete, it's just about those corners.
The builder had been here to get the property to the air control.
All right. So since we have a motion by special finance, I mean, by special issues, I'm sorry, y'all in favor signify by saying no.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Wait a minute, let's do a roll call, please.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. President. My concern, and I know, I understand what Mr. Wyatt's saying, but for you, Mr. Kendrick, if the city approves work in our right-of-way that in turn has a detrimental effect to an adjacent property owner, is that...
The legal standard is that they can't dump water on an adjacent property, and that's more of a civil remedy. I don't think that we would have any liability based on this particular situation.
Okay.
I don't think that the severages requested is substantial enough to, as somebody said, cause the water to flow one way or the other, so no, sir, I don't think we'd have any responsibility.
Okay.
I can tell you, we wouldn't be sued, but I think there's a very good defense to any action of what the city did, it had nothing to do with the work done on the property, it might have diverted the flow of water.
Thank you, Ms. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So that passes seven to three, and that is Resolution 154. Next item, 031018, request to enclose within a construction fence for the duration of a project for a sidewalk along Oxmore and Seminole and the parallel parking spaces on Seminole and Trinity United Methodist Church's entrance. Requested by James Decker, Brassfield and Gory, Wyatt Pugh with BEZ, and I have asked the head of the Building Committee at Trinity, who happens to be my younger brother, Mark Limbaugh, to come speak about this.
I'll take all condolences now.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you all for giving us a few minutes this evening. Again, my name's Mark Limbaugh and have served as Chair of the Trinity Building Committee for the past year or so. Before that, was Chair of the Master Planning Committee, and I'm sure Brian Erickson will find something else for me to be Chair of soon. We are about to undertake a major project, a lot of y'all are aware of that, and I've got some Brassfield and Gory folks here with me in case we have some questions of a technical nature. James Decker and Jason McKay are both here, they're both going to be involved in the project on a day-to-day basis, so they could certainly respond to any technical questions you might have. I've got a few slides, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'll go through a little bit of the history of the project, and hopefully that'll help some of you who maybe aren't as familiar with the project to kind of see where we're going here. Okay, Brian. Couple of years ago, we found some moisture damage in our facility. It's really in that courtyard, if you're looking from Oxmore, the courtyard on the right, the one on the left is a columbarium and prayer garden, the one on the right, we affectionately call the pit, because there's nothing in there right now but dirt, mud, some brush. It's ugly. So we found that water was invading the stone, it was getting in behind the stone, it was forming mold. Unfortunately, that was in our kids' area, the elementary school kids, so we've had to close those classrooms for the last couple of years. We had a study done to determine what it would take to fix that. It was over a million dollars to remediate that moisture damage, and we decided if we're going to spend that kind of money, let's go look at the rest of the campus and see if there are other things that we might need to do. So we formed a Master Planning Committee in January of '17. That plan was completed and approved by the church in September of last year. A building committee was formed the next month. We chose Williams Blackstock and Brassfield and Gory to partner with us on this project, felt like they were the two best qualified in town for that. Earlier this year, we held a capital fundraising campaign, we had pledges totaling $7.8 million. We were very pleased about that, and the church gave its final approval on moving forward with the project just a couple of months ago. Just to give you a sense for kind of how that... The budget for the project breaks down, and I would focus your attention on that very first line. We're going to build an infill building in that courtyard, and the street level is going to be a new contemporary worship space, that's what we call it contact. The floor just below that will be a lot of new classrooms and assembly areas for our elementary school-age children. We don't really have any space for them right now, save about three classrooms that they're all sort of crammed into right now. We've got some HVAC problems that have been postponed and deferred over the years, and they've added up, and it's much bigger than we wish it was, but we've got to fix that too. I would also point out the last line item over at Trinity West Homewood, the old Oakmont campus, we're going to do some sprucing up over there too, some paint, carpet, some ceiling tiles, and some other... Got a little bit of moisture problem there too that we're going to fix. So the total project's $12.8 million, that's a little more than the $7.8 that we have pledges for. The church realized that once we complete the first three-year campaign, there will be another request for a campaign just on the heels of that, so we can pay this off in six years. All right, Brian? Here's an aerial view of our campus. Most of you probably are aware of what it looks like, but you can see in that southeast corner, in fact, we've kind of drawn a blue line to where we're requesting the fencing be located. That pit that's sort of right there, that courtyard, is where the primary amount of construction will occur. That's where we need space. We're basically building a new building in that courtyard now. Obviously, it will connect to the three sides of the courtyard, but the existing building isn't going to prop up structurally the new building. We've got to build a new building in a courtyard. It's not an easy thing to do, but we feel like it's going to serve the church well down the road. You can also see from this image that once we fill in that courtyard, we're out of room. We have nowhere else to build anything, so this is likely the last project that the church will ever undertake at this site, because we just don't have any more room. We'll be out. You can also sort of see that once construction starts in that courtyard, there is very little space between the south face of that new building and Oxmore Road. We need as much space there as we can for construction equipment and the like. Okay, Brian? This will give you an idea of sort of what the project entails. The green in the upper-left corner there is where we're going to relocate our administrative folks, the staff is going to move over there. We'll have a new welcome center. Of course, that's right across the street from our parking lot, we think that'll serve us well in terms of getting visitors and new folks in. The orange at the bottom-left is an Arthex, it's going to get a facelift, a much-needed facelift. If you like popcorn ceilings, you better come to the Arthex now, because soon they'll be gone. The red is really an area that's going to be touched for renovation, so that's on all three floors of the campus there, and we'll do carpet, paint, ceiling tiles. We're just... We're trying to update it. It all looks pretty old and tired, so going to spend a little money there. The blue box is really the issue here. Again, that's the courtyard in which we'll be building a new building. Once that new building is built, this is what you'll see when you drive by Oxmore Road, Brian. The door on the right is an existing door into the office, the door on the very left is the door into Wesley Hall, and right now between those two is nothing, but we're going to fill it in with this infill building, and that's the design that Williams Blackstock has come up with. We think it's very nice. We're trying to make it look like it's always been there. Our goal is not to make that new addition stand out. We want it, when people drive by, to think, "Well, that's been there for 70 years," and that's the reason for that particular design. Okay, here's... I think for those of you who were here last Monday night, here's the plan that we've developed for the construction period. It might be a little bit hard to see, but the dark gray area is the area where construction equipment would be coming in and out. There's an entrance to that... I wish my arms were longer, I'd point to it, but there's an entrance to that gray area to the right and exit to the left. So we'll be pulling in trucks and construction equipment into that gray area to offload and whatever sort of construction activity needs to occur, and they'll be exiting on the left side. Obviously, BNG will have flagmen out there, will be directing traffic appropriately to make that as safe as we can. We're also... We've also got a pedestrian or man gate, you can see it off of Seminole there, and we're going to allow the workers to sort of come in through what is now the entrance to the church offices, that really good-looking gray overhang right there that you see. We'll be selling pieces of that too. You can see in the crosshatched area of the new building, again, we don't have much room. It's about 30 feet from the closest corner of the entrance to the offices there, out to the curb, isn't much room for some of the heavy equipment. We're asking to close the sidewalk temporarily simply because we need the space. If we had more room, we wouldn't even be here tonight, but we don't have the room. So you can also see that the west edge of that construction area really only goes to Wesley Hall, so the big sanctuary and that entrance is not affected at all by this. There is one handicap ramp, a curb cut right off of Oxmore, but it's right in front of the main sanctuary, so we're not impacting that. We're trying to be as least impactful as we can, but we honestly just need the space during the construction period. Okay, Brian? And lastly, just sort of a summary, after talking to Brassfield and Gory, we really felt like this was the safest way to handle this period of time. The construction period's about 14 months, shorter we hope, if Brassfield and Gory can make it shorter, they would like it to be shorter, so would we. We just want to keep that entire construction zone, that area, as pedestrian-free as we can. We just feel like by closing the sidewalk, it not only gives us room, as that second bullet says, but it also keeps people away from that construction zone. We don't feel like anything good is going to happen by people walking directly beside that construction fencing. It is a temporary request, as soon as we're finished, we'll repair whatever damage was done to the sidewalks, and it'll be opened back up. We feel like it's a project that benefits really all of us. I mean, I think the core of those churches right there in Central Homewood are serving us all well, and all we're trying to do is really improve how our church can serve Homewood residents and others. So thank you for your time. We'll answer any questions you've got.
Any questions? Wait a second. Well, I'll start with Mr. Jones, go.
These are just some random questions. Are you moving the scout room?
We are. The scout room will move from... Good point. From that green section, that green box, it goes up to the third floor, we've coordinated that closely with the scout representatives there at the church. They're very happy with their new location, they get more room where they're going, and the scouts will get exercise running upstairs to the third floor.
Okay, good, good. And then my next question was, is there a crosswalk at, I guess at that intersection so at Seminole, so that when people would need to cross over to the other side of Oxmore to walk down the sidewalk, is there one there now?
There's not.
Brian, there's not.
Brian, let's go back.
We need to look at that, because we're going to have people walking down the sidewalk on Oxmore. I know, I know, but...
Go to the next-to-last slide, Brian. There we go.
There is a sidewalk, you know, being a member, there is a sidewalk on the Dawson side to the east across Oxmore, there is, but only on one side, not on both sides. There are... There is no sidewalk, but I will tell you, folks park in the neighborhood and walk as if there is one, but there is not one, and that's a good point. What, Ms. Smith?
I said it would probably be a really good idea.
I think it's an excellent idea, Mr. Jones, and I think it's something we can tackle sooner rather than later. Mr. Wyatt, did you have a question?
I do, I've just got a couple of them, and Mr. Jones actually came up with a better idea than I did. I was going to say, is there anything about the construction that would prevent someone from walking down to Manhattan?
No, you can still walk down to Manhattan.
So you could walk around the block, whatever, if you wanted to, although crossing the street would probably be much shorter. Secondly, just to make sure, are we talking about all of the sidewalk?
No, it's about half of it. If, again, if you look back at that diagram, we're taking about the eastern half of that sidewalk. sidewalk. Again, the western half won't be affected in any...
I'm sorry, I'm not asking a question. The entire width of the sidewalk?
Yes, yes. We want to go all the way to the edge of the curb.
Got it. And you said 14 months. Was that for the whole construction or the construction part where you're going to need the sidewalk?
Well, it's the entire length of our construction schedule, but again, keep in mind that that infill building is really the piece of the project that takes that entire period.
Got it.
It just, the other pieces that we're doing will be done during the 14 months, at different stages during the 14 months, but that building is going to take our best ass 14 months.
And the last question I had, the construction entrance, this off of Oxmoor, any chance they can time those entries and exits so that it's not...
Not during peak hours?
Correct. Not during school, not during traffic time. Is that something that can be worked out?
I'm sure it can. A lot of that traffic will come very early in the morning. They start early, earlier than most of us do, and I think it would be in their best interest not to be scheduling things at 7:30 or 8 o'clock.
I would agree.
All right. Any other questions to my left?
I will just, I may have a comment, but not necessarily a question.
Okay, good. Let's tackle questions first. To my right?
I have a recommendation, chief. Not a question.
Okay, well, we'll get to those. Okay. Thank you, Mark. All right. Now, let's hear the report from Special Issues.
The committee met and voted three to one to recommend approval as presented to enclose the sidewalk. The motion was made by Council Gualtney and seconded by Council Higginbotham. Council Andrus voted no. But I will say, my presentation, and I see the need, and I'm going to change my vote tonight, so...
Okay, good. Comments?
I just have one. That was a very good presentation, Mr. Limbaugh. Having been an employee at Trinity for over 10 years, I will say, I think it would be a mistake, like you said, to, at any point during the construction process, allow that sidewalk to be open, because I think that's opening up people, that's opening up the chances for something bad to happen. Because, as we all know, construction sites are, you know, you just never know what you might encounter on a construction site. So I think keeping people off that sidewalk for the duration of that project is probably the best option. And I think there are alternatives, and I think Mr. Jones had a good point about the crosswalk, so that that would allow easier flow from East Hawthorne over to the school, I mean, over to the church. And then there's this side of the sidewalk that could be used. So I feel, I feel like y'all have done your due diligence and your study, so I would say that I support that motion, support the idea, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The observation I was going to make, because I was present at the committee meeting, and I know one of the big concerns a number of council members expressed at that time, was that the people who are walking on the sidewalk directly across the street from the church, because they can't walk on the sidewalk on the church side, might try to cross in the middle of the block, which creates sort of a dangerous situation. And this is just my recommendation. I thought perhaps church, as a good gesture, a gesture of good faith, could come up with some sort of signage to put on that sidewalk during services that would say, "Please don't cross in the middle of the block," which obviously will not necessarily stop everyone, but maybe it will shame a few people into saying, "All right, I'm going to walk all the way to the crosswalk and cross there." My other recommendation was just an observation that I noticed you're about five million short, and, you know, I've always heard that's what big brothers are for, so I'll just leave that there.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. I know, I know. Mr., anyone else? Mr. Gualtney?
I agree with Barry's comments as well. Council Smith, my apologies. Because I look at it as a safety issue as well, but one of the other things I see is, you know, we have a sidewalk on another side of the street that can be utilized. Plus, I see more people walking the sidewalks on Manhattan than I do on the sidewalk on the church. And if I do, because I come through there every day, sometimes multiple times, and there's rarely someone in front of the church and not a city employee, I'm sorry, church employee, walking through there. So I think this is a good direction to go, to keep pedestrians off of it more than construction.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Wolverton?
I just, I just had a question about following up on the hours of delivery and certain construction pieces happening. So I know that the, I mean, similar requests have been made. I know for the Patriot Park Pool, similar requests have been made, and they have not, I mean, I know that those guys have been talked to multiple times, and they've continued to bring in big trucks about 7:45, 8 o'clock, while people are still trying to get kids to school. So I'm just concerned about the recourse for, I mean, we could sign off on it and say, "Great," but, you know, what's our recourse for, you know, not abiding and being a good neighbor, basically? You know, I mean, can we set certain hours that they can, you know, basically be plugging the roadway?
Certainly, too. Our efforts and our plan to schedule trucking, I don't know that I can suggest a recourse. I can just commit to the idea that we really care about the neighborhood, and we're going to make every effort we can. The things I know we can do very easily are those that are most impactful to that concern, like concrete pores, where we might have 10 or 12, 15 trucks. We can schedule those in the wee hours of the morning and be out of the way. Big trucks with steel coming in, we can schedule those. The one-off small delivery trucks, the idea with this, the plan we presented is, they will get off the road quickly. They'll get into the site within the fence, do whatever they have to do, and then get back on the road quickly, so hopefully not slowing traffic down anymore, somebody turning right.
Yeah. I mean, I think as everybody stated last week, this is the busiest road in town, probably.
Right.
And we honestly wish there were a different way to do this. But we had no other space to build this building. Our master planner came in and said, "You've got one opportunity here to put a building in that courtyard, and that's your last chance to do anything facility-wise on this site."
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I ask, can I get an updated copy of what you presented, what Mr. Limbaugh showed?
Yes, sir.
There's more detail than I need that.
All right, good. Thank y'all. All right. 041018, request for consideration of painting the Shades Cabba Tunnel, requested by Jennifer Andrus. Report from Special Issues. Ms. Andrus?
The committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval per state approval. The motion was made by Council Higginbotham and seconded by Council McCluskey.
All right, good. By the way, the resolution previous was 18155. So that carries a motion. Any discussion on the tunnel at all? I think everyone saw the agreement that dates back to '07 that Mr. Burgett sent out with Aldott. You didn't see it?
It's '09, it's 2009.
2009?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I apologize, I missed the ending of the meeting. So what did they, what did they want to paint on the tunnel? I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine. We don't have anything specific in plan yet. It was just something that I asked if they would, if the art students would be interested in doing, and they're very interested, and per our approval. And so I just said I would take it through the process and come back to them, so we can certainly, you know, give them recommendations. I like, someone talked about Homewood Patriots last week, and also there's the Shades Cabba Way, which would be fun to have up there, too, so...
Mr. Jones, I was walking my six-year-old granddaughter, Lily Grace, through there the other day, and I asked her what colors she thought would be appropriate. She said pink and purple.
Blush and bashful.
So, I mean, that's just, you know, one first grader's recommendation.
That was why Walter asked the question, so...
Yes, exactly.
I'm just looking for maybe the principal to have a little guidance, and we don't have this complete chaos. That's all I'm asking, I guess.
No, and I think, I think that's a fair request. Okay.
I would just say, maybe before the painting commences, the EZ takes a look to make sure there's no paving needed, no electrical work needed, just get everything ready to go. We don't want to tear up what the students do after the fact.
That, actually, it's funny you said that. I actually ran through there this morning, and I had that exact thought. I think where the grates are, you know, much like we did on the Lake Shore Trail, I think we could smooth some of that over. I definitely think, so I was, really, literally had that thought this morning. What would come first, the painting or that paving?
All of that work.
The paving would come first. Okay, okay. I'll get with Berkeley on that. Yeah, that's, I did really have that. Randy, I just speak with Randy about that, and he did recently change the lighting, and so that is all LED lighting, and I have been aware of that ever since I've gone through there, and it really is, the LED lighting is much brighter. And so I think if we do the painting and then we clean up some of that, some of the asphalt there, I think we'll be in good shape. But the really, the rough edges, if you'd agree, Mr. Limbaugh, are where the grates are.
They are, but you've also got some pretty heavy-duty cracks in the walls in about three different places. If you'll, if you're going towards Shades Cabba on the right, there's a section that needs some additional concrete or, what do you call it, spatul? Help me. Spackle, you know, there you go.
I'm usually looking at the ground so I don't fall, so I will reach, I'll reach out to Berkeley tomorrow and have that conversation with...
All right. But I'm not going to ask for the pink and purple. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is Resolution 18156. All right, we're going to take a couple of items out of order.
It really isn't a resolution.
Okay, we don't need a resolution.
No, sir, because we have the agreement that was passed in 2009.
Good, all right.
That permits us to maintain that, so...
So all we're doing is keeping a commitment to Aldott that we've had since '09. All right, we're going to take a couple of items out of order. One is 301018, which is a request for consideration to endorse the downtown master plan requested by Mr. Thames. And Mr. Thames, you have someone here that wants to speak to that?
Yes, sir, and I know we, just real quick, and I know we went back and forth. Is it 301018 or 291018?
No, this is 301018.
Okay, okay. Yes, Lindsey Puckett with the Regional Planning Commissions here. Just if there's any additional questions, she spoke to us last week in committee. This has already been approved by the planning commission. All that is needed at council level is simply an endorsement.
All right, ask away.
I was wondering if you could PEA that document and send out a soft copy?
Absolutely.
That'd be powerful, massive, but if you could PEA it with...
Of the document itself?
Yes.
And the overview presentation? Yeah, absolutely.
That's really informative and thank you.
Great.
All right, so you obviously did a great job on your presentation.
I think I started this process in July. Brett's heard the presentation probably five times by now, but I'm happy to bring it back up again or answer any questions. But the next steps would be, so again, as Brett said, the planning commission, because it's a master plan, they adopted it, so you all just endorse it. But the next steps are zoning updates for the downtown area. We've got a third-party consultant for us called Placemakers, who's a nationally well-known firm that specializes in zoning and signage updates. So they will be here on November 28 and part of the 29th. So on November 28, we're going to get started and kind of have an education session, training session, with city staff and planning commissioners, and kind of decide which way we should go with these zoning changes. So that's the next part of this process, which is obviously an implementation tool, and then you all will be adopting those zoning changes. So the first part was the master plan, and the second part is zoning.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Kendrick, would this require a resolution or not?
I have done a resolution.
Okay, good, then it'll require it. That's fine. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval?
A move.
Second.
Stop. Okay. Mr. Thames, you spoke first, so a motion by Mr. Thames, second by?
Second.
Ms. Andrus?
Could we, could we also just make note of things that are already in process, such as, you know, we're doing the lighting, we're looking at the lighting in the parking deck. I mean, that's part of the lighting.
Sure, and the tunnel we just talked about was a recommendation. There's a few other quick tear-away projects out of this that we can address. Obviously, the 18th Street project is ongoing.
Right, right. I mean, just a lot of things are already in motion, which is great, but I just want to make note of that. Okay.
All right, good. All right, so we have a motion. Is any other questions or comments? If there be none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously, and that will be Resolution 18156. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
And I'll also send out the date and time when the consultants will be here, if any council people want to participate in the sort of roundtable discussion about what they, what direction they're going to go with as far as zoning.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
No problem. Next item is 131018, which is request for consideration to declare a 2018 Chevrolet 1500 four-by-four pickup truck, last six on the VIN is 346255 as surplus, so it can be returned as police department is withdrawing from the ADECA task force requested by Captain Sutton in our police department. Captain, it might be a good idea for you to kind of fill the council in on this situation, and then we'll treat this as an ordinance.
2017, we were part of an ADECA task force. With grant money, we purchased a, the truck, and then we were reimbursed by the grant, so the city was made whole, but we owned the truck. So we are now withdrawing from it. Before, we were part-time in this task force. They changed the parameters on us and wanted us to become full-time in the task force. Something we did not want to do. It's a smaller task force, you know, none of the other, other over-the-mountain cities participate. It's like with Dowie and some other things, but we did help out a lot, but we weren't willing to go full-time, so...
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but as I understand it, it required a greater commitment?
Right.
Of manpower this year than?
Yes, sir. They just changed, and I, you know, we understand, that's no law. We're going to help them if they need help, just like any other law enforcement thing, but we're just going to withdraw from, officially from the task force. We, like I said, we got, we paid for it out of our money, out of the narcotics fund, and then it got reimbursed by the grant, so we got our money back. But now, we had title on it, but we have to technically give it back to them now. Weird way of doing things, but that's how it's done in the state, and that's all. If there's any questions, I...
Any questions of Captain?
Can I just ask, I don't have a problem about them. What did the task, what was the task force working on?
It was a narcotics task force.
Narcotics?
Yes, sir.
Narcotics, then, there, so I thought perhaps, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right. You've got an ordinance prepared, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment surplus. It's hereby established and declared that the following described property is no longer needed for public or municipal purpose. 2018 Chevrolet 1500 four-by-four pickup with a VIN number ending in 6255, and surplus property is to be returned by the police department, and that this police department is drawing from the ADECA task force. The mayor and city clerk authorized any documents necessary to return the surplus property.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Before we go further, Mr. Jones had a question.
Yeah, just, I was just wondering what the, I guess, why we needed to handle it tonight. Was there...
We're just trying to get it done, sir. You know, we are not driving it, it's sitting in a warehouse. You know, we didn't want to put any more miles on it, and we have already withdrawn from the task force, so we're just trying to get it taken care of and get it back to them, because they can use, the vehicle will belong to them, they can use it, and, you know, we're just trying to get it handled.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
A move. Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Roll call, Mr. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be Ordinance 27-17. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for adoption.
Seven minutes.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Thames. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this ordinance is adapted unanimously. Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it, sir. All right, next item is Committee Referral Agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
A move.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. Any questions? If there being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move on to other new business, and we'll try to get through this quickly. 15-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at 3055 Independence Drive, requested by John Nelson and Greg Cobb with our BEZ, and that public hearing is set for 11:05. 16-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the signed ordinance at 201 Green Springs Highway, requested by Amin MacBull, and I apologize if I mispronounce that name, and Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. We also will set that for 11:05-18 at 6:00 p.m. 17-10-18, which is a request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration to a signed ordinance at 8:13 Green Springs Highway, requested by Rayad Shinara and Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. That, too, is set for 11:05-18 at 6:00 p.m. 18-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Public Safety for consideration of condemning a house at 1801 Kensington Road, requested by Wyatt Pugh. And in order to be notified as it should be, we'll set that public hearing for 11:19. 19-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Public Safety for consideration of condemning a house at 1569 Valley View Circle, also set that for 11:19-18 at 6:00 p.m. 20-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Public Safety for consideration of condemning a house at 1627 Salter Road. We will set that public hearing for November 19, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. 21-10-18, request to set a public hearing and referral to Public Safety for consideration of condemning a house at 2827 Sixteenth Place South, and we will set that public hearing for November 19, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Finally, we will, 22-10-18, request to set a public hearing for consideration of declaring the property located at 1509 Beckham Drive, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance is 1098 litter, and the ordinance 13-10, open and unenclosed storage, and ordinance is 1750 and 19-10 excessive growth, requested by Scott Cook, our code enforcement within the police department. We will set this public hearing also for November 5, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. All right, next item, 23-10-18, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to set the community grant agreement for Homewood Park, requested by Mr. Bischoff. Mr. Bischoff, is there any background information you want to give us?
The county's given us for the operation of the seniors.
Oh, good. Any questions of Mr. Bischoff?
I've had Mr. Kendrick's.
All right, if there are none, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
A move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 18-157. I'm going to take one more item out of order. 14-10-18, request for consideration for approval of the Telescaf upgrade contract, requested by Brandon Broadhead and our fire department. Real quickly, gentlemen, you might want to fill us in on where we are on this.
Right, quick, this is the staffing software and the time-management software that we use in the fire department. We have for several years. It's going from a client base to a cloud-based program, and this is simply to upgrade the program that we currently have and go to the cloud-based service. So instead of, I guess, owning the software, you buy the service for the software.
Any questions for Chief President, Mr. Jones?
Maybe it's for Mr. Burgett. I thought you had mentioned to me we were trying to come up with a solution city-wide.
Well, for time. We do have a solution for execute time, which is city-wide, but no one at this point but Telescaf can do the way the fire department schedules. The one-off, I'm sorry, the one day on, two days off, the three-day rotation, it's not possible. Execute time is working on that, but they say they're a year or two away from implementing it.
That's okay. So you did say that they could do it, but I didn't get the?
It's in the future for them. I mean, am I correct? Only?
That's correct, that's why, we understand it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to check that.
Can I ask, are these annual contracts? I mean, what contracts are we looking at here?
This is a?
This is just the upgrade agreement. There's a no timeframe associated with it. We can get out of this.
Would we have to give them a certain notice?
That's not true.
Uh, 60 days.
There has to be a term on the contract.
But this is for the upgrade.
I know that, but there's a term. If we're signing an agreement, what is the term of the agreement?
You can terminate with 60 days notice.
Okay, so there's no?
No, you, yeah, you don't have to have it.
It's just a servant.
It's basically month-to-month.
They don't provide it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of our fire?
Just one other question, I just want to make?
Mr. Wyatt?
Because we had another one tonight. This didn't come to committee, and that's fine. Was there any reason it didn't come to committee?
Basically, the price that they offered us was a promotional, a promotional price that expires in the next couple of weeks because of my lack of ability to recognize that next Monday was a fifth Monday, it threw my scheduling off. I thought it would go to council tonight, committee next week, and come back. So my mistake on that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I just don't want us to always get in the habit of dropping things on.
No, and my preference would be to go that way.
Absolutely. All right, thanks for the explanation, Chief.
And this is part of the budget, this is not going to be a minute.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all in favors? Wait a minute, did we get the motion and second?
Seven minutes.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Wolverton. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's Resolution 18-158. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Couple more items. Let's see, 24-10-18 is the request for consideration of approval of vouchers from the period of October 8, 2018, through October 21, 2018, requested by our city treasurer and finance. Mr. Jones, who reviewed those?
Mrs. Smith.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I came this morning and looked at the vouchers, and besides thinking that the Verizon bill was ridiculous, everything was good, and we can pay the bills.
So we have a motion from Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's be a little more enthusiastic. Thank you. All right, 25-10-18, request for consideration to release a weed lien, I am struggling with that.
Weed lien.
Weed lien at 1605 Berry Road, requested by Mr. Burgett, our acting city clerk.
He's a weed.
Can you tell us what that is?
Yes, Mr. Burgett, can you tell us what that is?
This was a lien that, I guess, kind of fell through, it was from 2007, and it never got recorded at the courthouse, I'm sorry, it got recorded probate, but it never went to the tax collector for collection. We received a request from a realtor that was selling the property that if they satisfied the lien, would we do a release on the lien. We received the money a couple of days ago, and we're doing the request so they can sell the property.
So it's a lien, okay.
Weed lien.
Weed lien.
Weed lien. Two words.
A weed lien.
It's difficult, I admit.
Move to Mr. Kendrick.
That's right. Mr. Jones has made the motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Higginbotham, thank you both very much. Any further discussion about the weed lien? If there is not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-160, and I thank you very much for that. Mayor, we get to the point where we certainly welcome your comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really, just one item tonight, I just wanted to report to the council in special interest to Ms. Andrus. Senator Wagner called this afternoon, wanted to swing by and deliver a check to the city of Homewood. It's for his contribution within the Senate to the city for the bridge project, the 280 Bridge Project, coming from the Jefferson County Community Service Fund, made out to the city of Homewood in the amount of $15,000. So that's from Senator Wagner, and I'm assuming made out to the city, I need to give that to Robert, and I don't know how we need to designate or do whatever, Mike, whatever you.
It really should have been made out through Cooper.
Well, I'm going to let Robert keep up the check tonight. I'll be happy to call him and tell him to make it to another fund, which I know they'll do, but I did want to get that reported, that we did receive the money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gualtney?
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention, and I wanted to shine some praise in our library for their continued excellence. They are the recipient of three grants recently. They, for the second year in a row, they received an asset, my library grant for $1,500. That also includes, outside of the grant funding, money to train a librarian to go to Houston for telescope programs and other things they're using. They also are the recipient of a three grant for three grants this year, that's for particularly free PK-type programs, and LSDA grant for $19,500, and that's for laptops for coding classes and 12 microscopes for STEM classes. It's an excellent program, showing that they're stepping in the future.
Excellent. All right, Mr. Thames, before we get to you, how much time is finance going to need? 30 minutes will get it. Thank you. Mr. Thames?
I do not think I need to call PND, but so next week, we are having committees Monday?
We are having committees next Monday in an effort to shift all the timing up, to change the schedule for December, yes.
I understand. Well, no PND next Monday. The Witch's Ride, everybody remember, is going to be at 5:30 this coming Sunday, that'll be exciting. Also, Andy and I, as well as Mr. Pugh and Mr. Cobb, had a meeting this morning with GMC for the look at the first concept drawing of 18th Street, which was very exciting. I'll be forwarding everybody a PDF version of that, so you can comment on it. They are scheduling, Mr. Pugh is scheduling some meetings with the impacted business owners to take a look at it. In the next two weeks, we'll have that up here in committee. So really exciting to finally see that starting to come together. And of course, Barry had you in your prayers this weekend, I apologize I couldn't be there. Oh, an award meeting, when is it?
October 30, 5:30 in the amphitheater in that city park.
Okay, good. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize, I'm a little hoarse today, but it was a pretty exciting, there was a pretty exciting homecoming game at Legion Field over the weekend, Go Blazers. So I kind of blew out my voice, but the only item I really wanted to mention was, of course, the next eight or nine days are going to be tons of different seasonal celebrations, Halloween, trunk-or-treat, all those kind of things, and I hope you'll go to all the rest, but don't forget to go to the best. This Saturday, the 84th Annual Hall Kent Fall Festival, 3 to 7, Hall Kent Elementary School. Inflatables, rides, grapefruit, silent auction, just a ton of fun stuff to do. So encourage everybody to come out and just have a really good time at Hall Kent Elementary School this weekend, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, so just kind of going off the coattails of Trinity's big ask here. I've heard that it takes about a million dollars to raise a child, something like that, so I might need a little bit of help. Mr. Wallace, thank you. So we just found out that number four is coming along, and so a little bit nervous about that, but.
Congratulations. This is wonderful. And you already know it's a boy.
Yeah, I might have to run over and hit the lotto, but, so, yeah.
Take care of her. Get some more.
But, yeah, so aside from exciting news, which may or may not have brought my daughter to tears tonight about it not being a sister. Raleigh Avenue Baptist is having their trunk-or-treat on Halloween evening. Usually, police and fire are there, and it's always a great time as well. I believe they're starting up around 5:00. And then, just, you know, wanted to say thank you to the police department again for all that they do on a consistent basis. I rode along on Friday evening into Saturday morning, and it was probably the busiest night I've ever been along with them, and you just don't realize all the stuff that they're doing on a day-to-day basis for us, so.
Good point. Mr. Jones?
How in the world am I supposed to follow up that? Brian, pull up. I knew you were going to do that. I just knew it. But anyway, that's wonderful news, and I wanted to also tell Mrs. Smith that we've been thinking about you a lot, you know, with your loss, and we certainly were a big family, and I apologize I was out of town all last week, but I've certainly thought about you and your family. So, anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. So Special Issues?
Greg's gone. I have three signed ordinances, I mean, signed variances, so I'm going to assume we can do that in 15 minutes.
5:30.
5:30 to 5:45. And just to thank everybody for all the kind texts and emails and the folks that came to the service on Friday, the mayor for being wonderful and helping me in all kinds of ways. It was a very hard week, but all the kindness that everybody has shown really did make a big difference. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wyatt?
So tomorrow is two weeks from the election, which means we got two weeks left for the LID bill. I just wanted to thank everyone for all their support, helping put stuff out on social media, and please keep it up. Talk to anyone you can in Jefferson County, any group that you can in Jefferson County, so that we can push this thing through. Thank you.
Public safety.
Oh, I should do public safety for Patrick. I think we've got those condemnations, and there are a number of them.
I'd make it 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think we probably need 30 minutes. So 5:45 to 6:15.
Are we going to have yard signs coming for the?
We will. It's possible they'll be tomorrow, but it should be at least by Wednesday. They will be at the Board of Education and all the elementary schools.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't put them in condos, but I wish we could. All right, Ms. Andrus?
What committee did you set, 5:45 to 6:15? Public safety. Thank you, sir. Okay, I will start with our all Metro championship Homewood Middle School girls and boys. For the first time ever, the girls won Metro, and the boys are undefeated two years in a row, 12-0, meets and championships. So we had an outstanding group out there. The boys finished 1, 2, 3, and 4, so almost a perfect score. The girls were led by Sarah Derrisoe, she had her breakout meet for the season, and so that was really outstanding. The high school went to the Hewitt Trustville High School this weekend and did the Husky Invitational, and Will Stone won for the boys, and Laney Phelps won for the girls. And the girls were runners-up, and they beat their 6A Fort Payne, so they got beat by Mountain Brook by, just, they beat Fort Payne by one point, that's right. And the boys won. So, and then also, go back to the middle school girls real quick, they beat Mountain Brook in a tiebreaker, and they had to go to the sixth runner, and the sixth runner was the one that gave them the edge, so they won. So it was really exciting, it's been a great week for Home Across Country. I wanted to tag on to what Mayor McBrayer said. I want to thank Senator Wagner and his leadership, Representative Faulkner, Representative Smitherman, Representative Slade Blackwell, we literally would not be able to do this project without Slade Blackwell. He gave us, not representative, I'm sorry, Senator Slade Blackwell gave us $150,000 for this project. We literally could not do this without him. So I want to thank him. Did I hit everybody? Representative Jim Cars. And we're still waiting to hear back from Representative Rogers. So I want to thank everybody for that. I want to thank Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Cobb for accompanying me last week to the Birmingham City Council. We are just almost there, and I really want to thank incoming Jefferson County Commissioner Steve Ammons for the work he's done. And then on the Birmingham City Council side, Counselor Darrell O'Quinn, President Valerie Abbott, and Counselor Hunter Williams. So we've really had just an outstanding group of people that have worked with us and our mayors, and, anyway, we're moving along, so we're real close, we're super close. Want to say my thoughts and prayers with Barry, also with Mike. Mike, I'm not sure I formally expressed that to you about the loss of your brother-in-law. It's been a tough couple of weeks for the council, so I'm proud of you guys. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Gosh, I just have to piggyback on a lot, and thank you, Jennifer, and keep up the work. We're getting close. And on Alex, we've got two big, important weeks on the lid bill, and I would just urge every members of this body to please spread the word, explain what it's about. It is about, you know, giving our local citizens the right to be able to make decisions about their property taxes, a right that right now they don't possess, okay? And because of where we are, we have, we've maxed out our right to seventy-five mils, okay? That's how, kind of how it works. And we're asking for the public citizen's rights to, you know, to be restored and not to be shackled by the state. Couple other things about the, I was going to mention the segue on the middle school track team doing so well. It all starts at the owl prowl, okay?
That's right.
And I was there this weekend.
Totally right.
And thank goodness the Andrus boys are not competing anymore, okay? And it was just, it was my last one, so all your moms and daddies can understand that. So a little melancholy, but it was a great event. And having said that, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, and unfortunately I don't have a photo to pop up, happy birthday to my son, Oliver, who turns eleven today. So, but thanks for one-upping me over there with your, your big news, and congratulations to you, sir. I don't think we have, we'll need public works. The only item I have, Andrew, is the buffer consideration in Oak Grove. I don't know if we're ready for that to come up or not.
I'm actually texting White right now to see if he's...
So you want me to go and set it?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't need it, we just carry it over and we're done, right?
Yeah, okay. All right, well...
Six fifteen.
All right, six fifteen. All right, we'll do six fifteen. And my love and blessings to my council member, Barry. It was an honor to be there, Barry, to hear your eulogy and thinking about you. I've been thinking about you for several days, so, and I will leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Barry, that comes from my wife and I both, and you know that. Our family loves Barry very much, as I do as well. The circle of life, congratulations, Mr. Wolverton. I mean, you know, some of us don't think we're to that fourth quarter yet, but, and I'm sure Mr. Kendrick's not, but I may well be, so that's okay.
Somebody's going to shout.
You know, again, Mr. White and Mr. White have worked so hard on this lid bill. It's really going to come down to not the votes within Homewood, but the votes within the county outside of Homewood. And frankly, that carries some challenges. And I know I've talked with quite a few people in the county, and I'd just say very simply, you know, give us the right to self-determine. That's all we're asking for, the right to self-determine. And hopefully, the vote will carry the day on this. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.